Good evening. The meeting's called for order, please. We begin, as usual, with public comment. Is there anyone here who wishes to make a comment that's an item not on the agenda? Are you here for agenda items? Yes?
Frederick Road, I'd like to speak on that if I could in a second.
You can, but I think that we will be speaking on that.
We will, yep.
Right, that's on the agenda for tonight, so we're going to get to it. Thank you. Okay, without that then, minutes, Paul?
That's the kind of tree.
Minutes?
Ma'am Chair, I request we defer the minutes until next week since I have not received the draft.
All right, we'll put that off. Now, let's start on our regular agenda. We've got an approval not required. Boniface Zeno, maybe mispronounced, planned a land to create two equal-sized lots at 013 Valley Road. Who is going to speak on that?
Good evening.
Good evening.
So my name's Jeff Nickerson. I'm an attorney here in town on behalf of the applicant. The board has looked at this plan twice, once in 2016 and once in December 2023. And after Land Court took a look at this, this is Land Court property, they asked for some adjustments to some of the dimensions which Gary LeBrie up at Warwick made. And so we're just asking for one last blessing on this so that Land Court can accept the plan and file it and we can move forward with transferring the properties.
It certainly looks as if everything is in good order. Any comments from the board? No? No. Do we have a motion here?
Then I move that the board endorse the plan as presented to us without regard to vulnerability or compliance with zoning.
And a second?
Second.
Any comments further? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. You're all set. Okay, next, public meeting, Cape Cod Beach House, LLC, site plan review application constructed a detached accessory apartment at 60 Frederick Road. So, would you like to present that? Or Jed, are you going to?
The notice.
Oh, you've got the notice. Go ahead.
Ma'am Chair, the posting date for this item was May 31st, 2024, and 25 of butters were notified by regular mail.
Good. Let's see if we have the butter here. And who will speak for this plan?
So, good evening again, Jeff Nickerson on behalf of the applicant. The owner of this property is Cape Cod Beach House, LLC. It's a limited liability company which is owned and managed by the Deerecker family. And Ted Deerecker, who is the resident of this property, is here with me this evening. So, as mentioned, this is at 60 Frederick Road in West Falmouth. The property has been in the family since 1987. It's owned by an LLC. The owners are Christian and his dad Ted. And we're here to request a site plan review, hoping to construct an accessory apartment, an attached accessory structure on the lot according to 240 6.6B. The lot is a five-acre lot, and so we think there's plenty of room out here. And according to 6.6B of our bylaw, a detached accessory apartment is permitted in the Residence B zoning district, which this is, by special permit of the zoning Board of Appeals, provided that the planning board gives a positive site plan review approval. So we're here to ask for that tonight. So, in terms of existing conditions, the property is in West Falmouth on Frederick Road, which is a dead-end road, east of Old Silver Beach, just north of Fox Lane, as you're heading north. 5.09 acres. The existing house is shown on the plan. I'll blow it up, it's a little bit easier to see. This is the existing residence. It's built in 1991. There's an attached garage. Total of six existing bedrooms. There's an existing pool, as shown there. Existing tennis court, which is down here. Scan over to this part of the plan. This might give a better sense of the size of the lot. That's another view of the existing house, the existing pool, and the proposed accessory structure. This is a heavily vegetated lot. I'm not sure if any of the board members took a drive-by or did a site visit, but there's quite a bit of vegetation. Frederick Road, which is the frontage, is down here. If you're in Frederick Road and you look up towards the property, it's pretty hard to discern that there's even a structure back there. Access is over a driveway, which is existing and is going to remain. It's going to remain with access for the existing house and the proposed accessory structure. As I mentioned, it's in a Residence B zoning district. The property is neither in a coastal pond overlay district or a water resource protection district, but in association with the construction of the accessory structure, the applicant proposes to put in a new septic system, as shown here on the plan. It's going to be a 10-bedroom septic system. The referral from the Board of Health noted that the property is not in a nitrogen-sensitive area, I'm sorry, the Town Health Department, Scott McGann, that the proposed septic design is suitable for the project. As I mentioned, the driveway access is going to be as it currently is, and there'll be an additional driveway for the accessory structure down to the south of the existing. The utilities for the proposed accessory structure are going to be fed from the existing residence. They're going to go right here to the west of the pool. That's going to be for water as well as for telecom and electric. Again, septic is going to be to the east here. The existing septic system, which is to the north, is going to be abandoned in favor of this new system. I should point out that all dimensional requirements of the zoning bylaw are going to be met by this application. It's, as I mentioned, quite a big lot. The total lot coverage, existing and proposed, is well under the limits. The dimensional setbacks are well within what's permitted. There's plenty of setbacks to Frederick Road, as I mentioned, which is to the west and south of the property. And so now, if I may, I'd like to talk for a minute about the architectural plans for the proposed accessory structure, which is again to the south of existing. So these are the plans for the proposed accessory structure. It's going to have two levels. The residence level is going to be on the second floor. The entry is going to be off a deck that's going to wrap around the exterior of the building. Two bedrooms. It'll be a separate kitchen and sitting area. And below, on the first floor, there will be a garage for parking one spot, some storage also, as well as a mechanical room. I point out that there's no interior access between the first floor and the bottom floor. The access is through the stairs and deck which are on the exterior. Roof plan for reference, and these are the elevations. So, as you're approaching, when you pull in the driveway and you pull up to the house from that new driveway that's proposed, the view on the east elevation is what you're going to see. There's a painted wood garage door, and there's also parking underneath on the carport for underneath the deck that'll be around the house. And again, to access the house in this, up the stairs, across the deck, and into the second floor. There's going to be 799 square feet of habitable space with a kitchen, again, two bedrooms, two bathrooms, no interior access, parking below. We propose that this concept complies with design standards as articulated in 240 9.1D. The architectural effect is going to be for an accessory structure that's incidental to the primary use of the primary residence there. Vegetative clearing is going to be undertaken as necessary to permit the construction of the structure, and the remaining vegetation is going to screen the improvements quite well from Frederick Road certainly, and also from any neighbors. Across the driveway from this is another member of the Deerecker family, so it's kind of a family area at the top of Frederick Road here. The existing house is modern with a more traditional garage and ample windows to take advantage of light. And the windows, as you see on the elevations in the proposed structure, are also trying to take advantage of that natural light that's out there. It's going to be an exterior that's going to be either wood or a composite finish that will be similar to wood, similar to the existing house, which has wood shingle finish. Character in the period of the accessory apartment, we believe, is in keeping with the primary residence. The modern architectural style is going to be favored in the development of this accessory apartment. Access, again, over the same driveway. Parking will be maintained on-site. And again, we believe this complies in all respects with 240 9.1. It's an accessory detached apartment on the same lot, subordinate in size to the existing. Lots over five acres in size, well in excess of the 7,500 required by the bylaw. Primary residence is going to be owner-occupied by Mr. Deerecker, seven months out of the year and more. The intended use of the accessory apartment is for family and friends. It's not intended to be rental. It's going to have two bedrooms below the 700 or below the 800 square foot maximum. And the footprint is well below the existing structure's footprint, not in a water resource protection district. So, in all, we feel that this is very much in keeping with the existing conditions. The screening is going to remain. It will be tucked away as it is now with the existing house. It's going to allow the Deerecker family to use the property appropriately. It's going to be a family use going forward. And we would just ask the board approve the site plan as presented so that we can move over to the zoning board and apply for special permit relief there as required by the bylaw. Thank you for your time, and I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, I do have a question. I'm going by the photographs, from the photographs to the elevations. And explain to me again how the two characters are similar, the character of one and the other.
Sure, so, I'm not sure if the photographs made it up on...
All the way at the end.
Try to blow these up a little bit.
It seems to have quite a high pitched roof, and to be, at least as far as I can make out, entirely wood shingle with a cedar shake roof.
Correct. The pitch of the roof on the proposed structure is limited by the topography on the site. So, from the existing average elevation on the front of the building, we can only go up 22 feet. And so, in a 22-foot maximum, that's the height of the existing or the proposed accessory structure.
We're in our own way.
Sorry?
We're in our own way.
Doing what we can to comply with the bylaw.
Right. Comments or questions? Yeah, go ahead.
How far back is the accessory structure from the street?
I believe it's over 200 feet from the street.
200 feet back?
Yes.
Wow.
Right, and it's at the...
It's a huge lot, I couldn't quite tell.
Quite big, yes. I'm sorry.
I guess the 75-foot issue doesn't matter.
No. Just looking for the dimension on the site plan. I'll try to find it here.
That's right. You said five acres, not...
5.09, I guess.
50,000 feet, okay. 10 times as big as I...
So it's 203 feet by this dimension from the front, yeah.
I see you're measuring on an angle. What about straight to the street? What's that dimension?
Well, the street actually concludes right here.
So that's where the measurement is?
Correct.
Okay.
The driveway comes off the end of that?
It does. If you go to the end here, there's a driveway and there's a rock there that says two different addresses.
Other questions, Paul?
I'd just have a comment. Mr. Nickerson, the drawings are very well done, very compact. But please tell Mr. Santos that he needs to do a better job on the locusts. We do that every time.
Fair enough. I'll mention it to Tim.
Can't find anything from that locust.
Well, part of it's so faint in the reproduction, it's hard to see. Right. No. Is that... Paul?
John?
John?
I'm all set.
I'm all set. Is there anything that you would like to say about the project?
No, I think my question's...
Okay, it's in compliance? It looks good?
Just making sure, public comments, all set. We did have one question, and it relates to the drywell. The drywell that's proposed on the plan currently is proposed for the rinse station. Usually, the engineering division indicates a drywell for all new roof area would be required. I can check with them to make sure that they would be okay with the roof area and the rinse station being incorporated into that one single drywell. But that's just a minor clarification that we can make before you do any sort of positive motion.
Okay, I have a question that doesn't call the project into question, but it's our own rule about the 22 feet is preventing this from having the character that will go definitely along with its main house. Because the pitch of a roof establishes really the character of the house. What do we do in those instances?
Well, this is unique because of the topography, though.
No, it's not. Topography doesn't actually affect the roof.
No, it doesn't, because it's a walkout basement, so...
Well, couldn't you then measure from the other side of the house?
Yeah, I mean, the measurement of building height is up to the building commissioner. So, that type of request, we would have to make to Gary Street, and we can follow back up with you on that. But Gary would be the determination of building height there.
Just in case it's something that the owners are interested in, having a good match between the two, could you please follow up on that?
Sure.
Great, thank you.
Just a quick, you said scaly. What method did he do? Did he take the average of the four corners? There has to be math here someplace. Present the math, how he did it?
There's a description in the zoning bylaw of how to measure building height. I just don't have it memorized.
Okay.
I can certainly follow up with Gary and just come back to the next meeting.
They're taking it from the lower level up to the peak.
I think they'll take an average of all four corners, so you can...
I think it might just be the average of the front-facing part of it, but again, I don't want to misspeak, so...
Yeah, it's probably just the front, but you can't do it just from one spot. We'd never be able to build anything.
Right. But I can follow up with the board.
Yeah, could you do that? Because we're definitely in our own way.
It's not the first time that this has come to be an unfortunate circumstance for putting a nicer building in. And we've always complied with the way our bylaw stated it, even though we'd really liked to have changed it. But I'm going way back in time. It doesn't happen all that often.
Okay, just like a follow-up on it in case they'd like to make that correction. It would certainly look better. Okay, could we have a positive motion for our next meeting?
Certainly can.
Thank you. And thank you.
Thank you.
Planning board discussions. 85 Brick Hill Road, a 40B referral.
Jeff presenting that?
Hmm?
Isn't Jeff presenting that?
No, no, he's sitting there.
I thought Jeff was presenting this one, too.
The 40B? I don't think so. No, Jed is. Jed and Melinda.
No, so this is, if I may, another 40B proposal, comprehensive permit application to the zoning board of appeals. And through their process, they are sending a referral to the planning board on this proposal located at 85 Brick Hill Road. Included in your packets is the referral form itself, which describes the project. So I'll just read it for the record. The applicant proposes to construct 40 units throughout nine duplex buildings and two multi-unit buildings. One building with 10 units and one with 12 units. Those are the two multi-unit buildings. And 10 of the units will be affordable. The comment period or your deadline for getting back a referral to the zoning board of appeals is June 27th, so we have a little bit of time. And Melinda has on a call up on the screen, the proposal, the site plans that are also included in your booklet. So what you're seeing there is existing conditions up on the screen. The law is currently undeveloped. It's got relatively flat topography. There's some areas where the slope of the land comes downward towards the south.
Where on Brick Hill is this?
This is located between Gifford Street and Oxbow, so it's that section between...
The winery's like down here. We have a winery. It's down here more.
Yep, yep. Wow, I don't think there was that big a chunk of land.
Yeah, Sandwich, thank you. Thank you. So, the proposal, as I mentioned, is 40 units of rental housing. Melinda, can you zoom in just a little on that? What you can see up on the screen, on the top of the oval, is the duplex buildings. So again, there are proposed nine duplex buildings. And on the south side of the oval are the two multi-unit buildings.
West side.
Uh...
West side.
Okay. West side.
Wait a second.
This is the east.
Technically, it would be the east.
Please check. I read that differently?
This is the east side.
Okay. I thought I was getting dizzy here. I heard west, the two other things. I didn't want to throw a third one in. My compass was spinning.
If you look at the circle, on the top of the circle are the nine duplex. On the bottom of the circle are the multi-unit buildings. Those are generally the studio apartments. Those will be roughly 500-ish square feet, between 500 and 600 square feet. The duplex structures will include two and three-bedroom units. You can see the associated parking in the interior of the circle. And there's stormwater retention basin out at the front. I believe that they're proposing a pull-off area at the beginning of the driveway for, you know, the bus stop. There may or may not be a bus shelter. I can't remember on this plan. And so, this is the proposal. You can see these next set of plans are going to zoom into the specific areas. And I believe the current proposal includes washer and dryer hookups in each of the units.
Even the little ones?
Yes, even the little ones. I believe there's a storage area, if I can read that properly. I don't have this memorized. Storage area at the beginning. I believe that that proposal is to have storage for the owner of the property, you know, for maintenance purposes, you know, lawn mowers, et cetera. They are proposing to allow for some storage for the residential units, depending on the type of storage that they need. But in short, that summarizes this development. Again, 40 units and 25% of which will be affordable.
Where will the affordable units be within the project?
I don't believe that they have gotten to that point yet. Typically, they outline where those would be located at the zoning board of appeals hearing. And they haven't started that process yet.
Don't they have to scatter them?
Yes, they are supposed to be distributed evenly throughout the development, and they're not supposed to be noticeable. They're not supposed to notice the difference. I will note that they are proposing a septic system to envelope the wastewater. The leaching field is proposed in the middle of the circle. At our site visit, they identified the option for denitrification. I don't believe that's a current proposal at this time, but they are open to the idea, and we did encourage them to pursue it, considering its proximity to Long Pond.
How low is the water table there?
I don't know. I don't know.
Would that matter to the leaching field?
It will, yep. Again, all permitted through the, you know, Board of Health. But the denitrification is the important part to not only, you know, obviously planning, but also to the board itself. But the fact that we're not allowing nitrogen to continue flowing into our estuaries is an important part, or at least limiting it. So they've got the option, and I believe that they're open to the idea.
What watershed is it in?
I think this is in Great Pond. Great Pond is an enormous watershed, which covers an awful lot of land, and I think...
I was confused, because you said it was near Long Pond. So that's what, is it closer to Long Pond than Green Pond? I mean, Great Pond?
Yes.
This is on the other side of Gifford. It's not that close.
It's close to Oxbow.
Oxbow, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah. So I believe it is in the Green Pond, but I can double-check that.
No, it should be Great Pond if it's Oxbow, right? There's a town map that shows it, so you can look it up.
Included in the packet also is the architectural renderings. So you've got copies of the duplex units as well as the multi-unit apartment buildings.
It's Great Pond.
Great Pond, okay. And the floor plans for each one of the units. They have attended a meeting of our land use group, actually twice, and so we've provided some input from the staff level. And so they are, as you can see, they're before the zoning board of appeals. I believe their hearing is to open in early July, July 11th. So that is what I have. And so we'll just take your comments, just like the last meeting, and we'll submit a referral on your behalf.
When do we get to the elevations? What impact is this going to have, Jed, on our 10%?
Well, it will certainly add to it. You know, as many folks already know, with the approval or the anticipated approval of Sandwich Road, the 375 Sandwich Road, we will exceed our 10, we will get to our 10%. This will add another 40 units to that because it's all rental housing.
What happens on the timing? If the Saxon project is approved, and this hasn't been approved yet, is this then...
If the Saxon project isn't approved...
Is.
Or is approved.
So we've reached the 10%?
Correct.
Then where are these folks?
They're still in the queue. My understanding is, as long as they apply before the 300 units or the 375 Sandwich Road is closed, then they are still eligible as a comprehensive permit, and we're still under that, we're still under that 10%. And therefore, the town has less control over the situation. So, they're still within that...
And what is the trigger for closing?
I believe it is closing the public hearing and then taking action. But again, I would want to make sure of that before misstatement.
And the action is the vote to approve?
Correct. Filing the decision.
But that's by the zoning board of appeals, not us.
That's right, by the ZBI.
Right.
So is the chance that Saxon could be approved, and then this would not be able to use the 40B law? It sounds like that's really close.
It's very close. It's very close. But I think what I, if I understand it correctly, which I do believe I do, is that they are still operating under the 10%. This application has made its way into the queue, and therefore, they are still eligible.
I was confused. You used the word "close," and I was trying to focus on that. So it isn't, it's applied, is what you said.
It's a complicated situation.
This will still be allowed?
It'll still be a comprehensive permit.
How many are in the queue?
Four?
Yeah, easily. And there's more coming. So, you know, I think it's important, especially in light of the housing production plan and what we described in the housing production plan, it's no longer about getting to our 10%. It's about exceeding the 10%, but doing so in a way that now the town has more control over the way it looks, the waivers that it asks for. It's now the town is in the driver's seat and gets to work collaboratively with the applicant. And so we've got a number of applicants who are coming forward through the LIT process, that we call the Local Initiative Program Process, where it's a partnership...
Which comes to us. It doesn't go to zoning.
No, it still goes to zoning. It's just a partnership with the select board, because the select board will then, if they approve it in its form, they would sign on to it as a partner. And so there would be a sort of partnership going through the zoning board of appeals process. So the select board essentially gives it a blessing. But that process is extensive. So staff and a working group, our newly-formed housing development working group, will meet with these applicants early in the process, will work through some of the issues that zoning board of appeals sees later in the process, sort of get them to a point where it's appealable, or I shouldn't say appealable. It looks good enough that the select board would sign on to and are approving of, and then it would go to the zoning board of appeals as a comprehensive permit.
Would they not have to design whatever they want under the existing zoning, local zoning rules?
Right. Well, so they would no longer be, the town would have the ability to deny the waiver requests. So the town has more power once we get above our 10%.
So they're still likely to be making waiver requests rather than abiding by the zoning bylaws?
They can always ask.
Okay.
But the difference between the process now is they can ask and they generally get. Whereas over your 10%, they can ask, but they may not get.
Okay, thank you. So either way, this is going forward?
Correct. Correct.
Yeah, that's good to know.
Do we have a list of waivers they're asking for?
We do not, not included in this.
That's not our jurisdiction, that somebody else's, okay?
That's the zoning board.
I mean, we can weigh in on it, but it wasn't-
We don't have a list, we can't weigh in on it.
It wasn't included in the referral, so I would-
Okay, we're, John.
I have a few questions, because we're supposed to get a referral on this.
Correct.
Excuse me. The plan is so small, it's hard for me to discern. How about lighting on the way in from Brick Hill Road to the, to where the units are being built? Is there lighting, street lighting, or?
I believe when we were out on the site visit, they were not proposing, or there was a, there's a utility pole located close to the entranceway, which I believe that they were going to, and already have, a streetlight on. And they were going to rely on that. However, looking at the site plan, can you zoom in on-
Which page?
I think you're on the correct page. It's the cutout of the entranceway. There appears to be a proposed light right by the bench. Zoom in.
How many feet, how many feet is it back to the parking area? Two hundred feet, maybe?
I do not know, we would have to look closely at this. I don't know the extent of the, of the closing.
If there isn't lighting, I would, I would suggest they have street lighting.
Yeah, so they've got, on the plan, it says proposed standard light pole and base. And they have a light pole at the very entrance.
Ah, there it is.
Approximately sixty or so feet back, they've got another pole, or another light. So they do have lighting along the sidewalk, in the entranceway.
Okay, well, I mean, along the hallway. I think the whole thing should be, have some lighting involved with it.
Okay, it does.
Secondly, the buildings appear to be for the, not the two bedroom, but the-
Mophie family?
Yes.
Studios?
Multi-unit buildings?
Multi-unit buildings. They could use a little bit more architectural design to them. They look like, I mean, I mentioned this too early today, that there should be a motel sign on the roof.
Yeah, it looks like a Motel Six.
Yes.
So, John, from the beginning of Brick Hill, the entrance right here, back to approximately where the oval starts, is four hundred feet?
I, I mean, you should have a streetlight maybe every hundred and fifty feet or so.
While you have that up, could you show in relation to where Saxon is going?
Sure. So, Sandwich Road, that's John Parker. Okay, here we go. Sorry, I had to get my bearings for a second. Right here.
Pretty much backs right up to the-
Well, they gotta be a mile apart.
How do I undo this?
No, that's not a mile.
So, if you want to do from-
That's just a foot, I, I, how far is it from Saxon? What's the distance in feet?
If you go from the back of the property-
To the back, yeah.
This, it's going to be down here. It's third of a mile, point three six.
That's a direct line, you have to drive down the road to get there.
Right.
Then, I, I just have one other question. Regarding the, the counting toward ten percent, any of these, when do they count? When does a project count? The day that, toward the ten percent? The day they're approved? The day the building permits are pulled? The day they're occupied?
The day that the comprehensive permit, so there's a variety of different timelines where you can count it on the SHI. The earliest you can count it is when the comprehensive permit is filed with the town clerk. That's the earliest you can file.
When filed as a, as an application for approval?
No, no, I'm sorry, the, the permit decision, the approval, when that is filed with the town clerk, that's when you can file it on the SHI. You can even do it before the appeal period, if you really want to. I'm sorry, before the appeal period is, is closed, that twenty day period.
And if it gets appealed, does it get frozen, or?
Correct, correct. There's a stay until that litigation and appeal is over with.
So then it wouldn't count until after?
It, yeah.
After the appeal's over, presuming the appeal is in favor of the applicant.
Didn't you just say earlier, though, when I asked, that it hits the ten percent and closes out others who are not in the queue, when the action is taken to approve it? When the ZBA says yes, then it counts to the ten percent?
Correct.
If he files for it, if the-
Whether it's appealed or not.
As long as the applicant, that's my understanding, as long as the application for a new forty B is in before the decision of the ZBA is issued and filed with the clerk on the three hundred units that would get you to the ten percent. That's my understanding, is that those are still counting in the under-ten percent category. So we're still under ten percent currently. So all of the applications that are currently before the ZBA are still active, under-ten percent comprehensive permits.
Right.
That's my understanding.
But to follow up, if I understand it correctly, let's say, the Sandwich Road project gets approved. And before the applicant files it with the town, there's an appeal, that stays, am I correct?
That's correct.
That would not count, even if he, even if the applicant filed with the town, if it's already been appealed.
Yeah, so I mean, these, these complicated questions, I would defer to our housing coordinator, because she knows a lot more about the intricacies of-
Get her on the phone.
I know, right?
These are pretty important to understand. I mean, I, I feel a little uncomfortable not knowing what's going on here.
Doesn't it count for that year?
But I think it's important to keep in mind that you are not approving or denying this project.
We understand that, but we just like-
Submitting a referral.
Well, we live in the town, and this is a really big impact on our lives.
Right, so for this agenda item, though, you're, you are just talking about a referral.
We understand that part, we understand that. We know what we're doing. But in addition to that, it's important to the town, and maybe even the people listening right now, to know where we are, where do we stand?
Sure.
And when does that standing change? And at the first time you said "file," the filing was of the application. Saxon has already filed the application. That had nothing to do with filing an appeal. And when you answered that, you said when the zoning board takes an action and approves it, then it counts to the ten percent.
Correct.
Then it closes, that was the word you used. Right, so everything in the queue is there, but nothing can be added to the queue at that point. And that has nothing to do with appealing.
So-
Appealing does not change that.
So I think it's important to, to be as clear as I can. People can apply as long as they want. Someone can file a comprehensive permit, even if you're at twenty percent, they can still file a comprehensive permit.
Yeah, but we don't have to deal with it in the same way.
Correct. It's just, it's just a different way of debating with the, with the applicant.
We're just trying to know for sure, when does the town get that extra authority?
Yeah, so it's, it's when you exceed your ten percent.
And that happens when the ZBA acts on the application.
Correct.
Whether it's appealed or not. That's John's question.
The appeal freezes it.
It does, but I believe, and again, I want to stress, I am not the expert here. So if you have, if you have expert level questions about forty B, I would consider asking our housing coordinator.
I don't think it was that tricky. Could I just please inquire?
Sure.
Would you be able to clarify that for us?
Sure.
It'd just be good to know, because we're close.
Absolutely.
You know, if the horse is going to run past the finish line, we want to know.
And I would like our experts to tell us what that target date is. They must have a general idea.
Of when the ZBA is likely to act.
Sure.
Because right now, the gates are still open, right?
Yes.
I just want to know, when do you think they're going to close?
Right, because you seem to think it's a done deal on Saxon, and I'm not sure that's true.
Is it July, is it September, is it January?
Well, so I think it's important to, to note with the three seventy-five Sandwich Road, that the town can, that when you're under your ten percent, you run the risk of an appeal to the housing appeals committee, if you deny the project based on, you know, you're just not liking it.
Well, they could still deny it, regardless, they can deny it.
Yeah, you're just, it's, you, the town still doesn't have the power. So I think, you know, without saying it's a done deal, it's, you know, it's, that's the whole idea of the forty B law, is that if you're under your ten percent, you're sort of forced to accept these projects. Once you exceed the ten percent, and the Saxon partners' project does that, then the town has more control over forty Bs.
Right, we just want to know, what does that, does the appeal freeze it or not? Okay, so we'll find out. So back to what, are, are we ready to move on?
And the appeals have the effect-
I have no other questions.
And the appeals have the effect of what happened to Lampoon Lane, you know, where that, those plans changed drastically with the lawsuit. How many years did that take? So, and I don't believe those were counted towards our SHI.
Yeah, they were, Bob.
They, they were from the get-go, from the five-story buildings?
Yes, and that's why it was, we asked that at that, with other things that were going on. We assumed that they weren't counted, because it was in litigation.
Okay.
But in fact, they were part of the count, even though they weren't being done.
Okay.
I speak very positively, but, you know, it could be proved wrong.
Yeah, it could be true.
Yeah, I just have a follow-up. It's not clear that Sandwich Road is going to be approved. But if it is approved, and it goes over the, for the limit, can they come back for phase two under the original application? Or would they have to file a brand-new application?
It is my understanding that they would have to file a new application.
That's what their lawyer said.
Because they have potentially two more phases.
It's, it's the big unknown with that project.
Scary.
But their own lawyers, in, hearings were televised. And in, in those hearings, their own lawyers said they would have to then come in under the new rules, which, you know, they can still get it, but it'd be harder. Okay, you ready to go back to this one?
Yeah, I have a question on this one.
Oh, good, okay, go ahead, Paul.
Aside from the locas. I noticed there's three garages there, and I'm just curious, why the garage, are they, are they to make up for the amount of parking that's required? Or is that some, something else going on there?
I think that's storage areas.
There's three garages shown in there. And are they trying to make up for insufficient parking in the open?
No.
Or is that something else going on there?
No, it's, I believe it's for storage for the property owner, to store things such as lawn mowers and other sorts of equipment.
It says garages, though, yeah.
Yes, I, no, I see that.
Okay, minor point.
I don't believe, I don't believe it's for the residents that rent.
The other thing I noticed on the wastewater plant, they do have space for a potential IA system, which is very, very critical. They need to do that on all, all projects from now on. What about the third one?
Any other comments?
Yes. Oh, since we're looking at this too from a site plan review sort of aspect, I agree, those two look like motels. All you need is a flashing sign on them.
Not expensive motels either.
No, that's the other problem there. That's my whole comment, too, with the whole of the development, it just looks slabby. There's nothing architecturally interesting about any of the buildings.
Well, they've got two styles going here. One is military barracks for the one-story ones, and quality in for the two stories. Not a good look.
You got it.
Warehousing people.
That's exactly what it looks like, is warehousing people. There is nothing interesting.
So I've got lacking architectural character.
You know, you could put it warehousing people. That really hits it, thank you, Charlotte.
It would appear that economics outweighed aesthetics by much too much.
You could throw shutters on there, you could-
I wouldn't even give them a suggestion, they need to rethink it.
Okay, we won't, they need to think, yes. There is no indication as to the type of siding that they're using. All they've just done is draw in lines.
There's a chance it's plastic.
There sure is. Bring a good old hailstorm through here, and that ruins that. There is absolutely no landscaping shown.
No.
There's not a landscaping plan.
Nope. So there's nothing at all. I understand this is disturbed land already, but for heaven's sake, if you want people to live there, give them a little green. Pardon?
Disturbed land gives you a clean slate.
It sure does.
What's the sidewalk material? I can't read that lettering, it's too small. I mean, there is a sidewalk there, right? Goes around, connects all the units.
I think it's on the other one.
We're looking.
What it said? I don't know if it's on this one.
I seem to make a one-
I, I'm guessing it's asphalt. So we-
It's a concrete sidewalk.
That usually looks concrete with those little dots, yeah.
That's what I thought it was.
Yeah, it's five feet, five-foot wide, concrete sidewalk.
Good. So, that's ADA?
Yep.
And are they going to have any post lights at, at each dwelling, or anything like that?
There's a, oh, at each dwelling? Let's see.
They're not going to show any lights?
Yeah, Bob brings up a good point, ADA requirements, do they still have to deal with ADA requirements?
Yeah, so there's-
So then there's lighting requirements for sidewalks?
There's lighting.
They don't turn any lighting?
Yeah, there's, there's lighting proposed on the plan. I don't know about post lighting, did, did you see any?
Yep, uh, po, po, uh, I can't speak. Post lighting, right here, here.
Okay, there's where the lighting, okay, the lighting's for the sidewalk, not the driveway, okay. That's, I didn't understand that. So there's their ADA lighting requirement, okay.
It's about every other unit, it looks like, or, like, there's not one in front of this one.
But they also weren't showing any lighting by the doors on the units.
That's a good question. Let's see which one to look at. Yeah, I don't see any on here.
So make a note of that?
Yep.
Yeah, the other item I, I wanted to mention is, as you come into the entrance, they have a, the two dumpsters for forty units. That's, that's not a lot. And secondly, there's parking next to, with handicap parking right at the entrance there, which is a very, very long distance to any of the houses. And I only see one other parking, handicap parking space, and that's up in the, toward the west, away in the corner there. So I don't think there's sufficient handicap parking there, and the one that's shown is pretty far away. And they could conceal the dumpsters a little bit, maybe have more of them.
So screen the dumpsters?
They're enclosed in a fence.
Oh, okay.
So, Paul, you said there's only one handicap spot for the whole place?
About two.
There's one right here.
They may have done the accessible spot.
There's two-
There they are, okay.
There's one, two, three, four.
Oh, okay, I can't see them, one, two.
So there's five altogether.
Okay.
Yeah, there's one up on the, on the left there, too.
Yeah, and the one that's-
Couldn't read it on this scale.
At the entrance, looks like it's located near a mailbox, so it, it looks like they're going to have a wall of mailboxes there, so they have an accessible spot right there.
Yep.
And a light.
Right here.
Is that what that is?
Yep.
Yeah, mailboxes.
Aren't they required to have a landscaping plan? They are.
You know, I, I would imagine, but I don't know what the requirements are for zoning board of appeals and what they, you know, require from the applicants. But, you know, we can make mention of it.
There's none there. And if they were thinking of attracting families to some of those two-bedroom units, they've made, made no provision for any kind of a play area for children?
Space, okay. Anything else?
Yeah, do they have to propose what the rents are going to be? Another, do you have that? Because we've heard that, when we listened to others, they were talking about what the rents are going to be. These are what the affordable rents are going to be. Do they have a table in there that shows that? These are what the affordable rents are gonna be. Do they have a table in there that shows that?
So they didn't have it in the application, Melinda, I think there's an application online.
Okay.
See if you go to the CBA page. Yeah, they do.
Do you know what page it would be on?
It's page eight of the PDF. Right there. So again, that's square footage for the studio units, roughly five hundred square feet. For the affordable unit, twelve hundred dollars, twelve hundred and eighty-seven dollars for the rent. And for the market-rate studios, it would be sixteen twenty-five.
Good lord.
Two-bedroom units, which are affordable, price would be seventeen hundred. You can see them up on the screen, and then the two-bedroom units' market rate would be substantially more, twenty-six hundred dollars, and then it goes up from there.
So they go from sixteen hundred to twenty-nine?
Yes.
Twelve, no, from twelve is a low to twenty-nine.
To twenty-nine.
That's where a studio, that's hard to compare a studio and a three. That's not a fair comparison.
Thirteen hundred dollars for five hundred square feet? Isn't that outrageous?
And that's supposed to be affordable?
That's what they're saying, Jim.
Yep. As you can see, all of the units are one-bathroom units. The majority of the units being proposed, as you can see, are studio units. Quite a few studio units, and both, all of them are within that, those two multi-unit structures, which, you know, we thought was a good thing, you know? A variety of sizes is.
Right, well, and there are hardly any studios in town, so that's actually not a bad thing. It's just that they're so stripped down. These are very stripped-down models for those prices. But I don't have anything else to add. Does anyone else wish to add to our thoughts on this?
So what's our referral gonna say? Do we draft a referral, then?
So I will read to you the notes that I have thus far. So, street lighting seems to be appropriate, but, you know, wanna make a comment about street lighting, and lighting throughout the development itself, especially lighting on the structures. We're gonna make note of the denitrification and the fact that they should consider that. The architecture needs a little bit of work, both the duplex buildings, but also the multi-unit apartment buildings.
I hope you don't say it that way. They don't need a little bit of work. They need a lot of rethinking, that the aesthetics are very poor.
I will, I will strengthen the words that I use.
There were some specific comments that should be recorded.
Human warehouses.
Two or three others as well.
They should produce a landscaping plan, and they should be creating some green space and some play space for future children. Paul did note the accessible parking is far away from the building, but I think we've corrected that because it seems to be sprinkled throughout the.
I couldn't see that.
And that's really all I have. It looks like they've got a concrete sidewalk, so that's a plus. And that's it, that's all I've.
That's good, it's a big issue.
What are their notification requirements for abutters?
I'm sorry?
Have the abutters been notified? Saxons, the abutters to Saxon have been very vocal in their disapproval.
Yep.
Are these abutters, and there appear to be a number of them, aware of this proposal?
Yeah, through the, it's the same process that we have, yes. They, they have to notify abutters, yep, through the comprehensive process.
Okay.
Could you just humor me for a second and go to the GAS map and just show the satellite view of this location? Since we have the ability to do it, it'd be nice to see it. Because I, we discussed that it was heavily wooded, but then we talked about being clear, so I'm.
Yeah, it's, I think it's pretty.
I'm confused.
The wooded areas generally to the rear of the site. The front of the site is, is pretty open.
It's scattered, well, okay, that's been cleared and grown back in, okay.
It's scrub.
Yeah, it's scrubby. It's not woodland, that's for sure.
Somebody, somebody cleared already for a development years ago.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's, right, this was cleared out, okay, I know.
Oh, look at that.
Yeah, so the, the land generally slopes from left to right.
What'd you say?
The land generally slopes from left to right, so that's why they're proposing the taller structures, the mu- the apartment buildings to the right so that they can sort of bring them down a bit. Not too many neighbors. I mean, there's some abutters that are in close proximity, but obviously to the east, there's nothing there.
Right. And right next to it, there's another big piece of land.
This, this right here?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's not, not developed.
I think there's a house in the front.
Right here?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, there it is.
Yeah. So access is an issue unless you have that house. John?
I'd like to say that, looking at the duplex units that he has, they appear to be the same style he built, he's found with last year. He did ten units across from Kenyon's Market, and they came, they're, they're very nice. I went inside a couple of them there. They're quite nice.
They were?
Yes, and it was a, a small lot, an acre lot for ten units, but there's a lot of parking. It was designed very well. The whole site plan is done really well.
And it's the same company?
Same, same developer, yeah.
That's good to hear. Thank you.
He's a found with guy, he's been born and raised here, so. So I presume it's gonna look nice when it's done, but I would like to see the buildings look a little nicer.
Yeah.
The studio buildings.
Okay, I think we're ready to move on.
Yeah.
Ready when you are.
Okay, Jill Newbauer's list of items. I was really interested in this. What was the reaction of other people? Jim?
Well, you know, when Jill was here, she talked about how we should be looking, that's where you've built, what's being built around it. This board decided not to do that, so I don't know what you want me to say.
We didn't decide not to do that. We decided to follow our own bylaws, is what we decided.
You decided that the.
And we would have to change our bylaws, Jim, and this is a suggestion we do that.
Okay, I actually disagree. I believe we have more authority than we use. I believe we're approving things because we think it's fair to the developer, because they don't really know what's gonna be there. But I think we could be a lot tougher on it, and I would like to see us do more.
Okay, well, I would like to see us do more, and here is a suggestion to fill in the detail on what that might be. And I think that it's an excellent suggestion.
Same list she read to us a couple of weeks ago?
No, it's more complete.
And there's some, there's some tweaks. So, you know, just as a way of introduction, Jill and I sat down on Friday, and she had sent me a draft list ahead of time, and so we worked our way through the list and talked about some of the applications that the board generally sees. And the majority of the applications that you're seeing right now are accessory apartments. And of course, we're working on making it easier for people to do accessory apartments, so we, that's why you see a tweaked version of this where there's an exemption for single-family homes, or single-family residential, I should say, so that you wouldn't be requiring an ADU to do the types of plans that she was suggesting, or perhaps some of them. But for the larger commercial properties that we occasionally get, or industrial-type projects, these are things to consider. And in addition to that list, I'm sure you saw it, but she provided notes and benefits to consider for the board as well. So, I think it was a productive conversation. I think some of the suggestions are, are definitely something that the board should consider. And, you know, as, as I mentioned to some of you, that, and as you already know, we are looking at your rules and regulations for special permits and site plan review, and we've been working on making updates to those. And if you'd like, we can start to incorporate some of these as potential edits for you to consider when you open your public hearing to consider those edits or those amendments.
So, comments? Paul?
I have a comment. I thought the memo was well-written, had some really good points, but a lot of this pertains to the architect itself. And generally, the architect does these kinds of things when he develops a project. And he talks about inspirational images. I'm not sure if that's a role of the planning board. That's something architects should be proposing for a, for a particular development. So a lot of these things, I think, are very good, but it's, I think it's outside what we can expect submittal to include.
Well, that, that's the point of the, of the memo, is to consider some things that you might want to ask for in addition to what you currently require. And so some of those examples might be some inspirational photographs from the applicant indicating, you know, I wanna do this unique ADU, let's call it, just for arguments. And so here are some inspirational photographs that I've, that I really like, and I wanna try to do something that's a little different, that may not directly mimic the primary dwelling. In fact, we had an applicant come before you, I don't know if you remember Owl's Nest, they came before you and asked, hey, this is something unique, and I want to try this different, this different look and feel. And so, you know, ultimately, it didn't come to fruition, but it's an example of that kind of idea.
We really have two different tiers here. I'm, we're going, seem to be going back, talking about ADUs with the small residential and big commercial developments. I think, I'm, ADUs, I don't think we need that level of detail. I mean, I, I thought our bylaw was good, and they have to submit it. But we def- I, we definitely need it. So, right now, as a group, we still feel that we don't have to show proposed buildings. It's not necessary unless they're approved. Is that pretty much our opinion? Because, let's just bring it up the same point I talked about last time. Because she's talked about here elevations of existing buildings, but what if you have a proposed building that's major? You're not even gonna look at it?
Well, I think, I think, you know, to answer that direct question is, is you, you would have, in my opinion, you would have a proposed building if it were physically proposed. Currently, the building that you may be referring to is just a conceptual idea. It's not a, it's not an actual proposal. But to your point, if there is a proposed building that happens to be within the sightline of, of another proposed building, then yeah, of course, you'd wanna see them. It just happens to, that would happen to line up at the same time.
Definition of proposed. I'm not saying that they've actually submitted a building plan. Is that what you're saying, that it has to be submitted?
Yes.
That's what you mean proposed? Not that they're talking about it or proposing it to the neighbors. If you're, it's specifically applied for a building permit.
Yeah, otherwise, it's not a real thing. I mean, it, it's just an idea. And we can't force people to show their ideas on a, on a plan, because that idea may never actually come to fruition. You really should be focused on something that's concrete, that's actually going to happen, and usually that is when they come through a permitting process, that they are serious and their intent is clear.
I wonder if we could go through these in a more thorough way, so we could say which ones we would want to see included.
Well, what I'd like to do is, is apply this to what we just looked at. I, you know, I'm trying to, I'm looking at these, and I'm trying to think, okay, floor plans we saw, elevations we saw, elevations in context including adjacent buildings.
That's the new one. That's the one.
But what does it look like? I have no idea what that looks like. Do you have a flat view showing your elevations, and then have other elevations, like it's on Main Street?
Yes.
Is that what, what that means?
That's right.
So, I've got that. So then, sections through the proposed building and through neighboring buildings.
That's the one that you're referring to. I apologize.
No, 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 I was referring to that second one, elevations in context including adjacent buildings. And then the sections, I mean, a section drawing is a, is a cutaway view of a building. I, I don't see how that would really help us. I mean, it, it shows what the structure is, you know, what, what they got for floor joists and studs and all that, but.
Doesn't help us.
I don't.
It may just be the way in which she's describing it. So that, that part of, that part of the conversation I had with her on Friday, that was the, the, sort of the hand sketch of, this is where your building is and what you just described, and here are the neighboring buildings, and you can sort of get a sense for scale.
Right.
This is twenty-two feet, this is thirty-five and whatnot. You can sort of get a sense for the streetscape.
Yeah, which is what we, we talked about when we were talking about, what's that other zoning we were talking about?
Form-based code.
Form-based. I mean, that's what we, we talked about with that. Materials, most drawings, they, they have siding and trim, roof materials, window and door type. We didn't get any of that with, with this plan. Exterior lighting plans, we usually get those with the drawing of the fixture itself, or a picture, photograph. And illustrating lights not leaving the site, so you would, on the plan, it would show the radius of light where it's being thrown. And that's not on, on these. So, let's see. Okay, I guess.
Comment on elevations. In the past, we have required elevations and even colorized elevations. But right now, with computer-aided design, when you're talking an elevation, they can give you something that looks very close to a photograph. They can do it. We get four lines and a grade roof on this, this project we just looked at. If they wanted to, they could have done a huge representation, made it look exactly like a building, and unless you were trained, you wouldn't even know the difference. I think if we're gonna be doing this on our commercial properties, we need that level of detail.
Yeah.
I understand we can't, nor should we do that on residential buildings. We're killing people. But if they're gonna be doing it on our main roads, I would like to have real first-class elevations, okay? Virtual plans almost, they have the ability to do it. It's all, it's just money, and it's, but it is our main roads, and it's forever. And I really think, I think we gotta beef up that elevation detail, not just one word.
You know, as I go down Main Street and I'm looking at the new Aldi's supermarket, the old Christmas tree shop, I looked at, yeah, I thought, where did the roof go? It's gone. The whole front, gone. And this, who's looking at it? Who knows what it's gonna look like?
The select board, and the select board approved that.
They did?
Under their authority, apparently, as a sign approval.
What?
That's the way it sounded, listening to them.
They're ripping down part of the building.
And they're putting up, putting up illuminated signs.
Oh, my.
I believe, I'd, I'd wanna check the agenda just to make sure, but I believe it was a signed variance that the select board was approving last night, a variance request. So, and I believe that's for the illumination.
Which they approved. So trashy. And how come they approved the new shape on the, the building? It's practically a new building.
Yeah.
I, I wasn't aware, unless I'm mistaken.
I don't believe any parking is being changed or anything that triggers site plan review.
But the appearance of the building has been dramatically altered.
We've been through this before. It doesn't, three, three or more parking spaces, it doesn't trigger.
They're not adding parking, and they're not adding square footage.
Right.
So they don't get to us.
Correct.
That's correct.
It's solely a judgment by the, by the building inspector.
Building department, yeah.
Yep.
Oh, my gosh.
Well, this has happened a lot, if you think about it.
Look at Whitey's, Whitey's old gas station there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a horror show.
But it didn't come to us because they didn't, they didn't trigger the site plan.
There was a guy backing a semi in there the other day, had everything blocked off.
At the hospital lights, yeah, I've seen that.
Hospital lights, yeah.
Oh, that's not a site plan.
Yeah.
But anyways, I'd like to see the beefing up on the elevations. I think, I mean, I, I don't wanna reference any projects, but I've seen projects in front of us before where the, virtually can walk around the building, and you can see views from every way, up, down, and everything. All can be done.
And I would add, another thing would be solar angles. I know in AutoCAD, you can, you can have the sun at different times of the year.
Yes, you can. I think that we should respect the work that Jill has done, and actually approve these or disapprove each one of them.
I wanna enhance them.
That we would do photographs of existing neighboring buildings. That sounds like a great idea. That the content, what we're trying to establish, your whole statement, statements now, dealt with the context of the building, and most of these do also. So the first three, the photographs of existing neighboring, a satellite photograph of the site with the neighboring building. site with the neighboring buildings, and the assessors' map giving it correct dimensions and so forth, these all speak to that point, and these would be excellent to add as, as part of our site plan requirements, requirements. We already, I believe, require certified site survey. I don't think that we need to ask for the inspiration, unless it's something totally weird, we could ask for it separately. On the architectural drawings to scale, we do get floor plans, we do ask for elevations, but it is new to ask for elevations in the context, including adjacent buildings. That's a great addition, and that's what you are asking for.
I know, but when you just say elevations, you're leaving it alone. That's a, that's a black line on a white plan.
Just a moment. Further down, it says three-dimensional views, illustrating, so it's getting to that. So, it just, you know, hold your horses here. And then, it's from north, south, east, and west, so you get it all the way around. Sections through the proposed buildings, and so that you can really study the differences in heights and widths of the building. That's an excellent thing to require. Three-dimensional views have been mentioned often now, we certainly would want to include that. Getting a materials exhibit, architects typically always put together a materials board, so they do not even have to create a new thing, they just have to lug it in here, so we can look at it. So, we're not guessing what it is from a scanty drawing.
Would, so just to clarify, would you want that to be a physical board that they bring in, or would a digital representation of that?
I would want to see a physical board.
Okay.
I know they make them up, so why can't we see it? Exterior lighting plan, we want that.
About all that, is everyone in agreement?
No.
What do you disagree with there, John?
I think that 75% of us, we get automatically, anyway.
Some of it, we do not get, we do not get the context ones. We don't.
As I mentioned, when we talked about this before, every one of us does a site visit, everyone else can see the buildings that are there. If you can't figure out what this building's going to be with the rest of them that are already there, I disagree with this. And I would like to find out, I'd like to ask her what, I'd like to ask her what she feels the additional cost would be for an applicant. She's an architect, she knows what architects charge. I'd just like to have some idea.
So, John disagrees. Bob?
Well, the only thing with what John said is, it's not just for us, it's for the viewers at home, and for people, the neighbors.
Yeah.
Too, so, I mean, we, we know what we're looking at.
I know, but we're, we're the board, they, they come to ask us, they don't come to ask.
Yeah, but we present.
And we have lots of neighbors come in here if they have a concern.
Right. But they, a lot of times, they don't really understand what we're looking at, and I think anything that helps them, it, it can help save an applicant a lot of headache with, with a neighbor that disagrees with something, because they just don't understand what they're looking at, too.
How about commercial neighbors? Or how about commercial properties here?
Yeah. Well, we had commercial properties opposing the nursing home retrofit. So, so just because it's a, a commercial property, doesn't mean they don't, they don't.
But that was all interior work, I mean, that wasn't.
But they still complained, you know, the, the, commercial people complain just as much as private people, when it comes to changes around property.
Anyway, I'd like to, I'd like to have her opinion of the, added expense to an applicant. And I, and I do appreciate the second-page comments from, that she made, that it will assist us, our board, our planning board, to take. I think that's very, very kind of her, to consider that.
I have a question, just about the materials, and you want to see.
We just get it, we're trying to get a sense of the board now. Good to ask, you know, who here agrees with this? One disagrees. Bob, do you agree with this?
To actually bring in a, a board, I, I work with the materials all the time, so I know what they are, so.
The rest of it.
I wouldn't require that, for me.
But you'd require the rest?
Uh, yeah, and as far as the materials, a digital representation.
No, it's above the whole sheet.
Yeah, I mean, once I ran through it with the current project, and understood what it was that it's doing for us, yeah, I think it's not bad.
Great. Jim?
Well, I think it's a huge improvement, I think we should go along with it. I'm sorry that I don't have quite the language that I want to use about what I'd like to see on digital things, but I'll bring it the next time, and maybe it's something that we go for. I understand what you mean, but I mean, something totally different.
Oh.
Yeah. I, when you, they have the ability right now to show a building, and you probably can't tell whether it's a picture or, or a drawing, and that's.
Same. It's rendering software, it's great.
We should, we should have that.
So, bring in some examples when you bring it, bring it in, Jim.
Well, I was, okay.
Not just the language, bring in some examples.
Fine, I want to, I can tell you the most one is the Woods Hole project with it, on the heights, that they built over Little Harbor. We saw every, the, the, the marketing people, pieces they put out, and the stuff they showed us, you couldn't even tell whether it was a photograph or not.
I think they're called renderings.
But the state-of-the-art renderings, yeah, not, not, just leaving the word elevation, it can be, we see, elevation can be two lines on a, or four lines on a whiteboard. I would, I'm really, I would like to see color, landscaping, lighting, sunlight, everything done, it, all can be done by computers now, that we have the ability to do it. Granted, it costs more money, but we're talking about our main streets, that'll be here at least 50 years, our view's supposed to be 50 years, and I think we should do it.
So, you're saying yes to this?
Yes, I would like to go a little further.
With three-dimensional, state-of-the-art renderings.
Renderings.
So, state-of-the-art.
With lighting and everything.
You think I bring in some models, too, that we could have put on.
Now, they are expensive.
Pat?
I agree with this. And this, I'd just like to say something, and maybe it was just dumb of me, I don't know, but the three-dimensional, there was something that came before us, and it was like 10 feet from the property line, and it was, I don't know how tall. And I thought, oh, that's fine.
Pretty green.
Because it was, it was many years ago, because I'm seeing it drawn on a piece of paper, and it looked fine, and spacing and everything, and then they started to build it, and I said, oh, my gosh, one practically on top of the other. My brain just couldn't conceptualize what it would really look like, three-dimensionally. So, the closer we can get to that, and I think a lot of this would take care of that, the first three even, would take care of the lack of imagination on my part, maybe? I don't know. There's just something there that this would aid in people to see what we're really going to be looking like.
Yeah.
But we do have to be careful with outrageous expenses, too.
Well, when you think of how many times we've sent people back, because they didn't have an, an elevation in color, or a landscape plan, or a lighting plan, then they're going back, so if, if we tell them that this is what we want, then they're going to come to us with that in the, in the beginning.
Paul, on your sense of it?
Yeah, I think some very good items in here. I'm not sure we need to do all of them, and some of them, we already have. Photographs of existing buildings, yeah, that's a good thing. Satellite view, well, the town has that, so we can review that. Assessors' map, certified site survey, they have to do that, anyway.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not sure about the inspirational images of architecture. The drawings to scale, obviously, with all the detail in there, we get that, anyway. Three-dimensional views, I'm not sure that's really necessary. Material exhibit, clearly is, that's something we have always wanted. Exterior lighting, I think that's important, too. But Bob mentioned about solar panels, but the issue that this is focusing on is the building.
He meant solar lighting, not panels. The sun changed from morning to noon and afternoon, he didn't talk about solar panels. That was a different.
No. Well, it's part of the building, they do put them up top.
Different subject.
Yeah. But the, the other issue is, she's looking at the building itself, and one of the things we're missing, I think, is the last article, there's no landscape plan. And the landscape can do a lot to address many of these issues that she's concerned about.
I think Jill was trying to present us with new requirements.
Yeah.
Rather than an exhaustive list of existing. Landscape requirements are there. We already asked for that.
Yeah. But that should come automatically.
So, as I hear it, that's four out of six, saying yes.
This is a good primer for architects.
So, as, as the group is working on phase two of recodification, and we come to the site plan, we will be incorporating this? Yes?
Um, yes and no. So, we would, we would look to incorporate a lot of these requirements in your rules and regulations.
Oh.
Because those, you can amend through just a public hearing that you advertise here. You don't need to go to town meeting and have that approved. Those are just requirements, those, think of it as rules that you would give to an applicant, and say, "We, we expect you to file this with a site plan review application."
But they're binding.
Yeah, they are, yeah. Yep, and we're addressing some of the outstanding issues that have been raised by Jim previously with respect to special permits. We are addressing language that's different between the zoning bylaw and the rules and regs. And then, of course, we're addressing the online permit applications, which has totally changed the process, so there's a lot of red lines that we're going to be bringing forward, but we hope we can do that sometime this summer.
Excellent. Excellent, because I think this would be a big improvement for understanding the context, and for ensuring that the owners and developers and architects are thinking about it.
I did want to bring up something on this list, with the materials. Do you actually want them to bring in a window and a door? That's what you're.
No, that's not what serial boards look like. Have you ever seen a material?
Well, like, you want a siding, and a chingle, but like.
They might, yeah.
Sometimes a window.
Roof tile over there.
Wait, I understand the siding, but in the roofing, but you want it not just in a rendering, you want it like an actual, physical.
On the materials, yes, but on the actual window, door, doorknob, no.
Okay.
Not necessarily.
Okay.
Unless it's really something odd.
That, that's something that they deal with in the historical commission, in historical districts.
Yes, they do, yeah.
Yeah, that's why I asked, because.
Oh.
We have to, sometimes certain, we have to ask for the specific type, but sometimes they do bring in a spec of a window.
All right.
I, I just, I think it's important that we get not only this, but the rules that we're talking about, and that we publish them, so that when these developers are bidding on, and trying to buy these things, they know what they're getting into. It's really tough when they come in to a board, and what they, the last time they did it, we, this is what we passed out, it was just a couple lines, and now all of a sudden, they've already bought the property, and we're going to tell them, "No, no, no, you can't do that." You mean, tons of resistance. If, if it was made clear to them that where that is going forward, that's the way it's going to be.
Oh, yeah.
And they would have, that would help.
That's why, it goes through a public hearing process, too, so.
Right. And then published, and then make it clear. I, I know, getting things approved in the town is tough already, but I, as far as our main roads, I just think we're, that's our job.
John?
So, if, if this becomes something that we agree upon and adopt, excuse me, would it include affordable housing developments along Main Street?
You would think so.
Would they be exempt because of the cost, possible cost?
Well, I mean.
So, we have a couple of examples, like we had the, the gas station, or the repair shop, where it's being converted.
Bless you.
We have the, one that's going on right now, the 110 apartments. We had the one that was in front of us last week, 11 apartments. So, would all those, would that, would it include those?
So, we wouldn't, for 40B applications, we wouldn't?
They couldn't?
They're not site plan review. So, ours is just a referral to the zoning board of appeals, but a Mr. Cod project, you could.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Pat, I think about a plan that we have just decided on, that came back to us innumerable times, and that was the Chase Bank.
Mm-hmm.
If some of these things had been in place at that time, they would have come in with it to begin with, and we would have had better language to describe what we were expecting.
Right.
So that a number of iterations that are coming back into us, they thought they had brick, and I pointed out, no, that's not what it says, in the, and then.
That's scary by itself.
Yeah, probably, yeah, so if they're coming, if they come before us, and they know that this is going to be expected.
You'll be more careful.
Mm-hmm.
So, we're just trying to figure out if it's in your rules and regulations, if an applicant doesn't provide those documentation, those documents when they submit the application, what do we do then? And so, I was just indicating, you know, they're just not considered complete.
Mm-hmm.
Until they.
They do.
Produce all those documents. We're not denying it, we're just saying, you can't move forward until you produce that stuff.
Good. Good.
Chair.
Yes.
Some of the submittals we have come from individuals who draft their own documents and so forth. They don't have the ability to do all that technical work that the architects and engineering firms can do.
I think Jim made the distinction to begin with, between ADUs and commercial buildings.
Yeah.
We wouldn't be requiring this of ADUs, and Jill Newbauer's submission used an asterisk to make a similar point.
These would be business-owned properties, we're talking with Paul.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we do ADUs on graph.
B1, B2, and B3.
Yeah.
And, and maybe industrial.
Right.
Not resident, and not, nothing with an R.
Unless it's a multi-family development, I would think, right? So, if, again, a Mr. Cod project that came forward, I would think you might want some level of that.
But that's business-owned.
That's fair.
Right.
Well, that has to be defined, then, where it applies and where it doesn't apply.
Yeah, we would do that. So, planning department report.
I think it works.
Oh, sorry, I.
It's okay, we're moving on.
There's really nothing new, I mean, we just reported out our projects at the last meeting.
Just last week.
Yeah.
No.
Yes, we're getting together a lot.
Yeah. We figured, you know, right before Melinda goes on vacation for all of July, that, you know, you get as much time with her as possible.
Okay.
How many, how many months is she off?
I'm going to have to man the station by myself for.
He's exaggerating.
The entire month.
Only this afternoon, she skipped out on some work.
Ouch.
Okay, committee reports.
I'm sure.
I'm done today.
Committees? Well, let's see, the short-term rental subgroup met just this afternoon.
They did.
We learned about Melissa's vacation plans, and I think that we made actually some good progress. Melissa is staffing that committee, and we had a detailed agenda to go through, so we could begin at the top of either a regulation or a bylaw, with the, the goals, the purpose, where it exactly is going to occur, would it be in a, in a zoning bylaw, or would it be in a town regulation? It appears now that it will appear as a town, part of a town bylaw, rather than a zoning bylaw, in order to avoid a tremendous pileup at the ZBA over special permits, but also, it forces us to make it much clearer what it is we want. We managed to get through enough of our agenda that the town council, Maura, is going to draft a proposed town bylaw, so we'll be able to see it all the way through, and what and what she's using as her pattern is the, the thought came out that we want to make it as new, we want to mimic what Provincetown, Truro, and Eastham, the three towns on the Cape that so far have actually passed short-term rental bylaws, others may be thinking about it, but they haven't passed them, so that it could be Capewide potentially, because we think it will be more successful if it is, and it happens that Provincetown invested in a very expensive-looking survey, um, to, uh, on which to base their thinking, so it was very thorough, so it's a good, a good pattern, and others are using it, and we're borrowing things from Great Barrington and potentially other places, too. So we're not reinventing wheels, we're trying to build it on, thinking that other towns are using and applying it and seeing if it fits here. So at the end of August, we meet on the fourth Tuesday of each month, the fourth Tuesday of August, Maura will be coming in with that draft. For our next meeting in July, Jet is going to bring us a redraft or, or potential changes to the commercial commo, uh, accommodations.
You got it.
Commercial accommodations bylaw that is in the zoning thing, because that's under commercial accommodations, you can put short-term rentals, um, everywhere in town, except the marine district and the industrial districts. They're allowed everywhere else, every residential district in town.
As a commercial accommodation.
As commercial accommodations. John?
So i, is the goal to control short-term rentals, eliminate short-term rentals?
Control, not eliminate. First of all, they're very popular and they're all over town now, and we discussed grandfathering, and people didn't have a problem with grandfathering. I believe the, the goal right now is to prevent real problems from developing here because the short-term rental industry is going in a very sort of frightening direction of, of corporate ownership, and that, that would be scary here, so it's to foreclose those options and to, as Maura pointed out, um, if possible, improve the behavior of a, a small but annoying subset of short-term renters who, you know, rent party houses and create problems in neighborhoods. So it's not, no, there's no thought that we would eliminate them, but we would probably cap and control them and fine them or charge them for their licensing enough to pay for good enforcement. The town is now, this was information given to us by the town health commissioner who's on this, this panel, the town is already looking into it, they're just doing the initial, you know, research on the so-called platforms, places that will take over the management of it, so that they take care of identifying where are their short-term rentals now, um, how many, what are they doing, and then working out a plan for licensing and, uh, collecting the fines and fees. The town's already doing that.
Is, is there any consideration about regarding, uh, enforcement on weekends?
There's, it's been discussed as a great difficulty, um, but.
Because there isn't anyone to do it currently.
There are not enough people.
There has been in the past, but there isn't currently, I believe.
Was it in the past?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yes.
Who did it?
Zoning enforcement officer.
Oh, one person?
Well, she had hours on the weekend, and I think I mentioned, there used to be a pile of signs up behind town hall.
Oh, right.
She'd go around and collect them, and if you ever missed your real estate sign, you just drive down here, she had it.
It wasn't just signs.
There was a lot, no, but she did weekends, she did.
If somebody called in a complaint, then the zoning force officer.
Well, now they do.
Handle it. Currently, if you call in on a weekend.
They get the answer on Monday.
Well, it's a problem now.
When the party's over.
Oh, I, I'm sorry, I want to go back, you listed a whole ton of things, I followed everything, but you used the word grandfathering as relates to, um, short-term rentals, how does that apply?
We have not discussed that.
I just wondered, well, you used the word, how do you think it's going to apply? How do you, how could something be grandfathered?
What it sounded like to me is two things, one, anything that's happening now would be okay, that's really broadly, and two, we really need to define that.
Well, do, does that mean if someone's doing short-term rentals right now, they're not going to be affected by it, they'll be grandfathered?
That's what it sounded like, but it has not been explored.
Again, if we were to go to the zoning bylaw route to regulate, that.
Which we're not.
Okay, because I, 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 I had a hard time grasping how that would work.
So effectively.
Everything else is great, that's.
It would only apply to new short-term rentals, so there's disadvantages going in the zoning bylaw route, and that, therefore, that's why the group is headed towards the general.
Because it applied to a zoning district as opposed to a rule over the whole town.
Right.
I now understand.
But there are things going on now that we might wish to change, for example, now, any short-term rental can put a sign right on that property and leave it there all the time. And those signs are proliferating, so that we are now finding signs all over about rental.
Yeah, there's one on High Street.
Right, and it, there are eyesores, for one thing, but they, they really, I don't think we want to grant, I don't want to grandfather that, so we'll see what, how that works out.
I think there's one on Main Street I see every day, VRBO, somebody's doing it, it's there all, it's three hundred sixty-five days a year, it's, it's there.
Yeah, and it might just be that, that the building department is interpreting the sign bylaw to not preclude those types of signs, and so, again, that might just be something that has to be amended in the sign bylaw to prevent that type of proliferation, using your word, so it's complicated.
Wherever it needs to be put.
What isn't complicated. Yeah.
Architectural drawings.
Bringing it back.
Right, and I think that was, we only met for an hour, so that's, that's, was today's meeting. Um, and that's my report, announcements, any announcements?
I have one.
Celtics one, yeah.
Yeah, go Celtics.
They did.
Yeah.
Very impressive, so, Paul?
Yeah, uh, as you know, we have a small ad hoc group pushing for a group to, uh, plan for the two-hundred-fiftieth anniversary of the country in twenty-twenty-six. I made a presentation to select board about ten days ago, and they were very receptive, had a meeting with the, uh, town manager, and he asked us to prepare a mission statement, which was provided to him next week, or last week, and as my understanding, they're going to consider it on the next agenda on July first, but there's a lot of interest in doing that, uh, and hopefully we'll get some traction. Many towns already begun this process, Concord, Boston, Lexington, even Dennis, so, uh, there's a special commission of the state, and there's forty people on there, about fifty of them named by the governor, and one of the representatives, David Vera, so he's also very interested in pursuing this on behalf of the town. The bicentennial was a big deal, and this is equally a big deal, so hopefully we'll get some traction.
You're likely to, good, thank you.
This is my book I asked for?
It's your book.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, nice.
Anyone else wants a book, let us know.
I made my own. We can always take a book home if we want to.
There you can.
Okay, we did all that, there's no correspondence?
No correspondence.
Future agenda items?
I had a thought, you know, years ago, we talked about talking to Tom Ferranti, who's the, the main developer of Mashpee Commons, we were going to have him come in and talk about how they developed that project, what their continual efforts are. It might be interesting to, sometime maybe in the fall, to invite him to talk about what Mashpee Common has done to date and what they're planning on doing next as a key development in this area, so.
Well, that followed a form-based zoning, uh, model, that's what they were thinking of, that's what they did, um, he actually, the owner, joined a very short-lived group that was going to look into form-based zoning, you remember that, Jim?
Oh, yeah. When we did Mr. Cod, it took the emphasis off of, uh.
It took the steam out.
Form-based code.
It might be interesting to hear from him how they developed this whole thing.
Right, it could.
Just a thought.
Right, I want to know what to attach it to, you know, where is that going?